Meeting of that, May County Board of Supervisors order. Invitation will be by Mr. Carter, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Let's pray. Have most gracious heavenly Father, hallowed be thy name. We thank you, dear Lord, for giving us the opportunity to gather here tonight. We thank you, dear Lord, for all the blessings that you have given unto each of us. We thank you, dear Lord, that we live in a community that is free. We thank you, dear Lord, for everything that you do for us. We ask that you bless our armed forces, our public safety. Bless these folks, dear Lord, as they are in service seven days a week, 24 hours a day. Continue to bless them. All this we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe seated? All right, first we have setting of the agenda. There's one. No, you're doing it again. Yeah, setting of the agenda. We got one addition we'd like to add. The sheriff asked that he would be allowed to speak in reference to a change of accounts for money that's been issued from the town. So if you gentlemen would like to approve that addition to the medicine minutes or agenda, excuse me. Reverend Jones has moved to add the item to the agenda. Is there a second?
No, second.
Okay, Mr. Wolfskill's seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All righty, that'll be item number...
Ninety-five.
Sixteen. Turn away if that's consent. No. The item sixteen on the agenda then, right after the sheriff's other transfer. All right, first up is citizens com... Oh, all those in favor approving the amended agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, amended agenda's been approved. Next up is citizens comment period. This time is provided by the board to allow citizens the opportunity to address the board on issues of importance to the citizen. No individual citizen can be permitted to address the board for more than three minutes. And I don't have a sheet where anybody signed up. Did somebody want to speak and they forgot to sign up? All right, seeing none. We move right into appearances. These scheduled times are provided by the board to allow citizens and organizations outside the county government to discuss matters of importance with the board. First up, we have a resolution in honor of the 2025 Appomattox Raiders softball team. Attached for the board's adoption is a resolution honoring the 2025 Appomattox Raiders softball team for winning 11 district games and playing in the Virginia High School League Class II State semifinals June 13th. Staff recommends approval for you to adopt the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as written?
So moved.
Mr. Carter's moved. Is there a second? Mr. Wolfskill seconded. Discussion? All right, call for vote, Mr. Carter. Trip Hips. Mr. Wolfskill.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
I vote aye also. Resolution is approved, and I'm going to ask Reverend Jones, since his long connection with the school district and sports, that he would read the resolution and make the presentation to the softball team. So if you saw the softball team members would like to come up, stand in front here. Don't be mad. No softball team members here? All right, go ahead and read the resolution, and we'll give them to them later.
Resolution in honor of the 2025 Appomattox Raiders softball team for high academic and athletic achievement. Whereas the Appomattox Raiders softball team, under direction of longtime head coach Janet Breyers, possessed the physical and mental strength to win 11 district games against only a single loss in the very competitive Dogwood District. And whereas the Appomattox Raiders softball team, as the number one seed in the region tournament, overwhelmed Bretner High School by a score of 11 to 0 in the region quarterfinals before prevailing against Glenver High School by a score of 3 to 2 in the region semifinals. And whereas the Appomattox Raiders softball team defeated Chatham High School by a score of 1 to 0 to win the Virginia High School League Class II Region C Championship. And whereas the Appomattox Raiders softball team defeated Lee High School by a score of 7 to 3 in the Virginia High School League Class II State Quarterfinals. And whereas the Appomattox Raiders softball team saw its season come to an end at the hands of King William High School by a score of 5 to 2 in the Virginia High School League Class II State Semifinals on June 13, 2025. And whereas the Appomattox Raiders softball team achieved this high level of athletic success while also posting a collective team grade point average of 3.92, one of only three Raider teams with a grade point average over 3.90 during the 2024-2025 school year. And now therefore be it resolved that with great pride, the Appomattox County Board of Supervisors does hereby honor the Appomattox Raiders softball team for achieving both athletic and academic success during this most recent academic year. And be it further resolved that the board commends the players, coaches, managers, trainers, administrators, teachers, and parents for the dedication and sacrifice necessary to achieve such accomplishments adopted by the Board of Supervisors of Appomattox County on this 21st day of July 2025. John Hinkle, Chairman, Appomattox County Board of Supervisors.
Thank you Reverend Jones. All right, next up, we have revolution... Resolution honoring the App Mac Senior FFA Chapter. Attached for the board's adoption is a resolution honoring the appointment for the App Mac Senior FFA Chapter for being named overall top FFA Chapter of Virginia for the third consecutive year. Mr. Adam McMahon and students from the App Mac Senior FFA Chapter are present to accept the resolution. Staff recommends we adopt the resolution honoring the Appomattox Senior FFA Chapter. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution? So Mr. Hips moved. Reverend Jones seconded. Mr. Carter. Mr. Hips. Mr. Wolfskill.
Aye.
Reverend Jones.
Aye.
I vote aye also. So is... I know the FFA chapter's here. I see some of them, and they're wearing their... Probably wearing their jackets. So if the FFA chapter would come up and just lay yourself in front of the platform and let the citizens here see who you are. All right, resolution honoring the App Mac Senior FFA Chapter, the top FFA chapter in Virginia for the third consecutive year. Whereas National FFA Organization has its roots in the 1925 formation of the Future Farmers of Virginia by four Virginia Tech educators responsible for teaching future agricultural education teachers. And whereas Virginia FFA Association of the National FFA Organization currently has 233 chapters with 33,900 members across the Commonwealth of Virginia. And whereas, App Mac Senior FFA is an active chapter of the National FFA Organization and with 203 members during the 2024-25 school year, is the premier leadership organizations for students in agriculture and education at App Mac's High School. And whereas, App Mac Senior FFA Chapter participated in several growing leaders activities during the recent school year, including their Grim Reaper Day, AMS Pen Pal Letter, Jacket Juke League Program, VCE Shepherding Workshop, and Leadership Workshops. And whereas, App Mac Senior FFA Chapter also participated in several building community activities, including Spirit FM Butterfly, Hugs Day, AG Specialists, Halloween Craft Store, Pollinator Workshop, Werewolf Day Parade Float Lineup, and App Mac's Farmer Year Partnership. And whereas, App Mac Senior FFA also participated in several strengthening agricultural activities, including Drive a Tractor to School Day, Party at the Park Recruitment Night, Raider Road Rescue Kits, FFA at the Capitol, and the APS Kindergarten Day Tour. And whereas, App Mac's Senior FFA Chapter at the 99th Virginia State FFA Convention held at Virginia Tech received a gold rating in the Superior Chapter Contest, earning the opportunity to attend the National FFA Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana this October. And whereas, App Mac Senior FFA Chapter was also the state champion in the Growing Leaders category, as well as the Southeast Area winner in the Building Communities category. And whereas, App Mac Senior FFA Chapter's Veterinary Science Team placed first in the state, beating out 27 other teams to win the state championship and the right to represent App Mac's High School and the Commonwealth of Virginia at the National FFA Veterinary Science CDE to be held in the National FFA Convention in October. And whereas, App Mac Senior FFA Chapter was named the overall top FFA Chapter of Virginia for the third consecutive year, testament to the excellent leadership and direction of the 2024-25 FFA Office of Team. And now therefore be it resolved that with great pride, App Mac's County Board of Supervisors hereby honor the App Mac Senior FFA for earning recognition as the overall top FFA Chapter in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And be it still further resolved, the board commends all involved for the dedication and sacrifices necessary to achieve such accomplishments, and wishes safe travels and best of luck to all those attending the National FFA Conference Convention this October, adopted by the Board of Supervisors of May's... App Mac's County on this 21st day of July 2025. Signed, John Hinkle, Chairman, App Mac's County Board of Supervisors. So board wants to now to join you and will give their certificates and congratulate these fine members of our community. All right, next up is a resolution in the honor of Xavier Mosley, 2025 VHSL Class II Indoor Track Long Jump State Champion. Attached for the board's adoption is a resolution in honor of Xavier Mosley, who has named... Who was named the 2025 VHSL Class II Indoor Long Jump State Champion. Staff recommends the adoption of the resolution honoring Xavier Mosley as the 2025 VHSL Class II Indoor Track Long Jump State Champion. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution? So Reverend Jones has moved to adopt. Is there a second? Mr. Hips is seconded. All in favor, or Mr. Carter, how's your vote? Mr. Hips? Reverend Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Wolfskill?
Aye.
I vote aye also. Is Xavier here? Why don't you come forward Xavier? We'd like to honor you. Now, no pressure, we'll let you demonstrate. Anyway, I'm going to ask Mr. Wolfskill, who's your supervisor where you live, to read your resolution and... Mr. Wolfskill?
Resolution in honor of Xavier Mosley. 2025 VHSL Class II Indoor Track Long Jump State Champion. Whereas Xavier Mosley, as a sophomore, proved to be a strong and integral part of the 2024-2025 App Mac Raider Indoor Track Team. And whereas Xavier Mosley, at the VHSL Region 2C Championship held in Salem, Virginia on February 23rd, 2025, placed 10th in the boys' long jump with a jump of 17 feet 11 inches and finished second in the boys' 55-meter dash.
Forty-two six.
Also, at the VHSL Region 2C Championship, won the boys' triple jump with a distance of 42 feet 6 inches. And whereas Xavier Mosley, at the VHSL Class II Indoor State Championship held at Liberty University on March 5th through 6th, 2025, finished 6th in the 55-meter dash... I ride horses in Dunk Court as fast. With a time of 6.79 seconds.
Oh, wow.
Man. Whereas Xavier Mosley, along with the VHSL Class II Indoor State Championship, with a season-best jump of 22 feet 6 and 1/2 inches, won the Class II State Championship in the boys' long jump. And whereas Xavier Mosley was named App Mac's County High School Boys Indoor Track MVP for the 24-25 season in recognition of his accomplishment and value to his team. And now therefore be it resolved that with great pride, the Appomattox County Board of Supervisors does hereby honor Xavier Mosley for capturing the VHSL Class II Indoor Track State Championship in the boys' long jump. And be it further resolved that the board commends the teammates, coaches, family members, teachers, and administrators of Xavier Mosley for providing the opportunity and support necessary for him to achieve this level of success, adopted by the Board of Supervisors on this 21st day of July 2025. Signed by John Hinkle, Chairman, App Mac's County Board of Supervisors.
All right, next up, resolution honoring the 2025 Appomattox Raiders baseball team. I think that's what all the people are sitting out there going at. Attached for the board's adoption is a resolution honoring the 2025 Appomattox Raiders baseball team for winning the Virginia High School League Class II State Basketball Championship. Staff recommends adoption of the honoring... Adopt the resolution honoring the 2025 Appomattox Raiders baseball team. Do we have a motion to that effect? Reverend Jones is moved. Is there a second? Mr. Carter's made a second. Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir.
Reverend Jones? Aaron, I vote aye also. All righty, Mr. Carter's great love for baseball. I'm going to ask him to read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, it's going to be a lot of whereas. Whereas, the Appomattox Raiders baseball team, under second-year head coach James... Jamie Terry, a 2001 graduate of App Mac's County High School, entered the season with high hopes and dreams of playing deep into June. And whereas, the Appomattox Raider baseball team possessed the mental and physical toughness necessary to win 10 district games against two defeats, finishing first in the tough Dogwood District. And whereas, the Appomattox Raiders baseball team seeded number two in the region tournaments, defeated James River High School by a score of 2 to nothing, and then beat Florida County High School by the score of 92, and Dan River by the score of 8 to 3, to win the Virginia High School League Class II Region C Championship. And whereas, Appomattox Raiders baseball team defeated Lebanon High School by the score of 2 to nothing in the Virginia High School League Class II State Quarterfinals before beating... I love this school. Pop Cousins or Pop Cousin? Pacozen? High School by the score of 3 to 2 in the state semifinals to earn a spot in the Virginia High School League Class II State Championship Game. And whereas, the Appomattox Raiders baseball team over King William High School by the score of 3 to 1 in the Class II State Championship Game held at Salem-Rabole State in Salem, Virginia on Saturday, June 14th, 2025, to claim the Virginia High School League State Championship. And now therefore be it resolved with great pride, the App Mac's County Board of Supervisors does hereby honor the Appomattox Raiders baseball team for winning the Virginia High School League and the Class II State Baseball Championship. Be it further resolved that the board commends the players, coaches, managers, trainers, administrators, and parents by the dedication and sacrifices necessary to achieve such an accomplishment in state competitive high school sports landscape. But there's one other thing that's not on here that needs to be on here, and I apologize for not saying it. And that is, we also have Coach Terry here that was Coach of the Year in the Dogwood District Baseball Team, which I think is great, and congratulations.
So come on up, baseball. All right, now the feel-good stuff's over this, maybe down to county business. First up, Mr. John Vanoy, Public Safety. Next up is Mr. John Vanoy, Public Safety Manager. Mr. John McGarrett, App Mac's County Fire Chief, requests to appear before the board to discuss the 2025 ISO rating. Gentlemen.
Greetings, uh, Mr. Chairman, Board. We wanted to come to you tonight to share the results of our ISO Public Protection Classification Preview, which officially takes place September 1st. Our project with App Mac's County's overall ISO score improved for App Mac's first due... For fires first due, reflecting meaningful progress in both emergency communications and fire protection services. What's ISO, Public Protection Classification? This is a national rating that evaluates how well a community is prepared to respond to structured fires. Communities are graded on a scale of 1 through 10, class 1 being the highest in protection. This score matters to our pocketbooks. Those insurance companies use the PPC to determine the property insurance ratings. A better PPC rating means potential savings for homeowners and businesses. The ISO evaluates three areas, emergency communications, which is my department, and fire department operations, and water supply and hydrant system, which is the fire department's section. This evaluation focuses strictly on structured fires, suppression, and other services that, like rescue, aren't evaluated. For the emergency communications center, we'd like to highlight the outstanding performance of your communications center. The ECC is truly the first critical step in getting help where it's needed quickly and effectively. This evaluation, ECC accounted for 10% of the overall score, and earned a 7.84 out of 10 possible points, demonstrating a solid and dependable performance. A breakdown of that rating is emergency reporting in that area is a possible 3 points out of the system, and we earned a maximum of 3 points in that system, which meets the national standards for receiving emergency calls. Telecommunications is 4 possible points, and we earned 2.8... 2.08 are 4 points. Your dispatches are trained and qualified, and we've already identified a couple ways to improve scores and strengthen continuing education. The formal protocols is for structured fires, and plans are already in motion. Calls earlier in the year, you guys approved promoting two dispatchers to supervisors. And they're going to implement a call of assurance program, which will help us improve in this area. Our dispatch circuits earn 3 out... Has 3 points as possible. We earned 2.76, so almost 3 points in that area. And this reflected reliable and modern dispatch systems to ensure emergency resources are alerted and dispatched without delay. In short, thanks to our non-mono dispatching, public safety teams, hard-working, ongoing system improvements, we have a stronger foundation for quick emergency response directly contributing to this improved score. Now turning over to the fire department's part.
So the fire department makes up 50% of this overall score. So we are the largest portion of that, followed by the water... The fire hydrants and the water supply to the county, which is 40%. So this time, we earned 28.93 out of 50 possible points, an increase of 8.61 since the 2019 evaluation. So where we were evaluated at is apparatus and equipment. So we scored well in this area, reflecting that our engine companies, the ladder truck was actually scored with the new ladder truck, and pump capacity meet necessary standards to respond to structured fires. Our personnel and staffing is weighted on the department that uses roughly 40 active and trained volunteer firefighters. And this dedicated group responds to calls for service while also investing a significant amount of time in training, which is a testament to their commitment and the strength of the volunteer fire service. So in looking at training, we earned 5.6 out of 9 points for firefighter training. While we have a solid foundation of this training and basic fire training, there's room for improvement in documenting our driver training and officer training more consistently, which we've already taken steps to improve on. In terms of our operational readiness, we receive full credit for incident management procedures and standard operating procedures, highlighting that we are organized and ready to respond when the alarm sounds. I'll talk briefly about the hydrant system and the water supply, which I said before makes 40% of the ISO score. They earned 34.28 out of 40 possible points. So the supply system scored 26.6 out of 30 possible points, which guarantees that our water infrastructure can supply at least 3,000 gallons per minute, which is critical in fighting larger structured fires. Our hydrant network, we were evaluated on 261 fire hydrants across the county, and 246 of those met all of the requirements to become considered qualified for this evaluation. Our hydrant inspection earned 4.8 out of 7 possible points, and that is based off of the testing and inspections that are already occurring. The only thing that could improve that really is the increased frequency of those testing and inspection. The last point we were evaluated on is a community risk reduction, and that is something that is an optional category, but we earned 2.11 points out of 5.5, and this looks at things like fire prevention efforts, public education, investigations. We're working to obtain certification needed to get full credit for our public education efforts that we're working on doing in the community and all of our schools and daycare. So why this matters, for why it's important. So this improved rating of a Class 4 4Y represents a significant achievement for Appomattox County. This directly benefits property owners through potential insurance savings and signals to insurers and our homeowners that the fire department has dependable fire protection capabilities. This success is a direct reflection of the hard-working dedication of John Vanoy and the 911 Center, and of the Appomattox Volunteer Fire Department and our mutual aid partners. With this improvement, we're excited about it, but the work doesn't stop here. We plan to continue improving and working on practical ways that we can best serve the Appomattox community in its care. the Appomattox community in its case. Got any questions?
So does that mean you're working towards a 3 slash 3Y?
We're very close to that, and I think with the improvements that Mr. Benoy's working on and what we're working on with the Fire Department, we'll be very close to that. Yep, we're evaluated every five years. Unless something large happens, they won't reevaluate again until five years from now.
Then my other comment, have you ever said anything to this organization? Because I notice on page four, it says, "The new PPC program changes effective July 1, 2014." I mean...
They're going through an underhaul or overhaul now.
They're not new anymore.
Yeah. They need to change out their verbic, I guess.
Any questions, Mr. Board? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Glad to hear of your improvements and your goals. All right, and Mr. John McGarrett. Next up is Mr. John McGarrett, Appomattox County Fire Chief, requests to appear before the Board to discuss Board's consideration for giving a minimum half of the loan amount of $225,000 on the purchase of ladder truck. The floor is yours.
Thank you. So I appreciate you allowing me to speak with you all again tonight. Obviously, I'm here on behalf of the Appomattox Fire Department, but not just as a firefighter or the fire chief, I'm here as someone like each of you who is invested and committed to protecting and serving this community. As you all know, last November, we came to the county asking for help purchasing a much-needed ladder truck to replace our aging apparatus. That partnership made it possible for us to put modern, reliable piece of equipment in service in our county in the coming weeks, very soon. Since then, we've worked hard to meet our obligation. We've set aside county fire program funds to cover as much of the annual payment as possible, but realistically, those funds don't fully cover the payment. We've planned internally on the anticipated sale of our 2003 ladder truck to close the gap. Unfortunately, despite advertising internationally on two major apparatus sale platforms, as well as through social media and local outreach, there's simply been no serious interest. We even advertised it with the disclaimer of accepting reasonable offers and still no response. What this means is that we're now faced with a situation where our financial focus is being pulled towards the loan repayment instead of supporting our day-to-day operations. We can cover this year's payment, but it limits our ability to handle unexpected repairs or replace critical equipment when needed. Our request tonight is to ask the Board to consider forgiving all or at least half of the loan. This isn't a request that I make lightly. We're proud of our department's resourcefulness, and we're committed to doing everything that we can to meet our responsibilities. The reality is that continuing these full payments will start to force very difficult choices, choices that could impact our operational readiness and response capability. To be clear, this ladder truck wasn't a luxury purchase. It's an essential, it's essential to our ability to serve this county safely and effectively. Forgiving this loan isn't about relieving a burden from the Fire Department, it's about ensuring we remain capable of doing our job without compromising safety of our members and the citizens that we serve. I respectfully ask the Board to consider a vote tonight as a show of support for our volunteer firefighters. Forgiving this loan, or even a portion of it, will directly support our ability to maintain the level of service this community deserves. We're not looking for a way out, we're looking for a way forward together. Thank you for your time, your trust, and your consideration.
Any questions for Mr. Garret of the Board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carter.
Excuse me, I'd just like to say how proud we are of the Appomattox County Volunteer Fire Department. You know, as a taxpayer and citizen, all else is, so proud of it. And we know that there's nothing frivolous about what you all do and the responsibility and the accountability about your activities within the fire department. I just think it's great that you're moving ahead, not looking behind you, but moving ahead, looking to the future, and I like that. And I am going to endorse half of the payment right now. I make that form of a motion. Mr. Chairman.
All right, is the motion made by Mr. Carter to forgive a minimum, forgive the minimum amount of $225,000 on the purchase of ladder truck? Is there a second?
Second.
Thurman Jones is second. Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, is that forgiving half to 225 or the full?
225, 225 is half.
Okay, I got you. Just wanted to be sure.
Forgiving $225,000. How would we just put that one? Any other discussion? All right, motion is on, is on the floor to forgive the amount of $225,000 on the purchase of new ladder truck. Call the question. Mr. Carter. Mr. Hips. Mr. Wescott. Mr. McGarrett.
Aye.
I vote aye also.
Thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Since Mr. Carter says, we're very fortunate to have the quality of volunteer Fire Department that we do, and EMS also. Thank you, John. All right, next up, public hearings. First up is CUP 2503-53 Quail Run Wedding and Special Events Venue, Mary Beth May's owner-operator. A duly advertised public hearing has been scheduled to receive comments on conditional use permit on the Quail Run Wedding and Special Events Venue, Mary Beth May's owner-agent. A petition requests a conditional use permit to operate the wedding and special events venue of 1433 Piney Mountain Road located in the Oakville community. The parcel is identified as tax MAC number 39, parentheses 3, 4, and is a total of 21.835 acres. At the regular June meeting, the planning commission voted unanimously, with Member Mills absent, to recommend denial of the petition as the petitioner failed to demonstrate that the land use would not have a negative impact on the harmony or character of the surrounding neighborhood. Along the issue cited during the planning commission public hearing, the discussion were noise and traffic impacts. Staff agreement that after receiving comments from the public, a resolution had prepared for consideration in accordance with the recommendation of planning commission, and an alternate resolution with conditions has been prepared should the Board consider granting the conditional use permit. Looks like we have multiple individuals asking to speak. Each of the individuals may ask to come to the podium, state their name and address, and we'll be allowed three minutes to present their case. First up is Mr. Chris Collins. Please state your name and address.
My name's Chris Collins, I own Collins Society and Windows in Lynchburg, Virginia. I've got a dozen trucks on the road, and Rusty maintains them all, keeps them all in working order, and he does a professional job for me, and that's why I'm here. He asked me to come speak on his behalf. Any other questions for me?
Any questions? All right, thank you. All right, next up, is it Ms. Nancy Stewart or Short?
Short. Short.
All right.
I'm Nancy Short, and I have, I'm an Appomattox County resident for 21-plus years. I'm a business owner in Lynchburg, and Rusty and Beth are very professional and will do an excellent job. They will only increase revenue for Appomattox County, which you see you needed with the $225,000 for the fire truck. They'll only help increase revenue for the Appomattox County, so, you know, I've lived here a long time, let's, let's help out Appomattox build. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any questions for the Board? All right, thank you, Short. All right, next up, Mr. Dave DeBoer.
Hi, good evening. My name's Dave DeBoer. We're just newly purchased homeowners or lot owners on Piney Mountain Road, Lot 1. My wife Rhonda and I, we just purchased that lot, and we're looking forward to becoming homeowners here in Appomattox County. We're asking that you agree with the planning commission and not approve the permit to operate a special events venue. It's going to have a large impact on the current nearby homes, homeowners, and future homeowners. It will not bring in influx of tourists, it will disrupt the residential area, it's going to lower property values, and it's going to limit the residential growth in the area, and that growth is happening now, and it does not protect the rural or historical nature of the county. It's Appomattox County, everybody learns about it in school. There are more suitable locations in the county that a facility like this could be placed better to compete with the other special events business. There's one seven miles away, and it's 500 acres. So I think it would be better spent bringing businesses in downtown versus putting it in the middle of a residential area. You know, their initial application for events are very positive, very pretty picture. The application says it's a small venue, but they're stating that they are already planning for overflow parking on this 20-acre property. What's a small venue? 200 people at a wedding, 100 cars for guests, numerous trucks with chairs and tables, maybe a bus or two if people are coming from outside the area. How many food trucks are they going to have? The facility has two bathroom stalls for women and one for men. How many porta-potties are we going to see on the properties? And more importantly, whose backyard are those porta-potties going to be in? So can you imagine additional 100 or more vehicles crowded on that road? I don't know if you've been on that road, but it's just barely wide enough to get two cars going in opposite directions. There's going to be, there's going to be some issues and some traffic congestion as well as accidents. They'll need our first responders out there to control traffic. Traffic control alone, besides a police presence, they're going to require portable lighting up and down that road to be able to, people to see where the entrance is. And we've seen that where Rhonda and I live, that it's, it's, it disrupts not only that small little area, but the entire section of the road. You know, traffic control will require police, portable lightings, and let's also think about stepping out a little further, that Piney Mountain Road dumps into Oakville Road, and I don't know if you've driven down that recently, there's going to be nighttime, there's going to be serious accidents on that road because of low visibility coming, coming down from outside of Appomattox. There's going to be serious accidents, it's going to put people at risk as well as our first responders that are out there. You know, we did hear in the first proposal that music would be turned off by 10 o'clock. I think the staff wants to extend that to 11 o'clock, you know, so, but how long is it going to be for the parking lot to empty out? How long is it going to take the traffic to, equipment to come down? It's going to be well into early morning of the hours, right? So what happens if the wedding venue doesn't...
At the end of your three minutes, right?
One more, one more, one more question?
No, I got it. I'm next, I'll get it.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, that's right.
State your address.
My current address is 5928 Interlaken Court in Haymarket, Virginia. My future address is going to be out there at Lot 1, Piney Mountain Road here in Appomattox.
I guess the other question is, you mentioned property value, and we've had periods before, and people bring that up, they bring actual evidence for like the sole environment's graded property values, period. Do you have any empirical evidence?
Now, with me, I could, I can email you something from our neighbor, from our county that we live in, Prince William County in Northern Virginia. And I, you know, you look at it now, that, they've already put that property on the market again at a lower rate level than what they originally done, so the property's coming down.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, up, I guess, is next is your wife, Ms. Rhonda DeBoer. State your name and address.
Hi, I'm Rhonda DeBoer. We're at Lot 1 on Piney Mountain Road. I'm here today to say that we really don't want this. We live in a neighborhood that's 60, 2,500-plus houses, a gated community. We are smack dab in the middle. There's other neighborhoods on every side of us, including Woods, and there's an interstate four miles down the road. When I'm outside, I hear that interstate. So what's going to happen when I'm sitting outside on the weekend with my family, because they're saying that this is going to be a major weekend event, and I have to listen to something else other than being with my family and my personal time? We bought this land because we wanted something quiet, peaceful to retire at, because we've always lived in the city, and we drove up to this lot, and we said, "This is where we want to be." Come to find out, in March, they purchased that lot. They had already started construction. Nobody told anyone that was purchasing the lots after them that this was happening. They didn't even get permission before they started redoing the lot to make it the venue. They had their Facebook page up, they had a website up, they were already taking reservations. Not only that, it's going to be on the infrastructure, on the roads, we're going to have to maintain the roads more often, which means you're going to up my taxes because they have a business. This is a residential area, this is not a business area. They are not going to bring revenue, and if you open it up for them, the next person's going to come and you're going to have to open it up for somebody else. So more businesses are going to want to move on to that road once you okay their business. You can't okay one and not another. That's all.
Okay. All right, next up, Ms. Helen Adams.
Helen Adams. I live 273 Turkey Road here in Appomattox. However, I do own property along with my siblings on Piney Mountain Road. First, I want to say, in the initial request to have it rezoned, they were only mentioned three properties that were adjoining property, and one was the warehouse, which is at the very back of their property, that only touches a tip of it. The second was Mary Frances Mower, which is across the road, and there's a section in the front that does come across in front of them. The third one they mentioned, and they only mentioned the three, is the Circle of Sea Farm. It's down the Piney Mountain Road a ways, opposite side of the road, not even across from their property. However, directly across the road is the Woody property. My sister lives there. She's a recent widow, and she lives alone. I'm concerned for her, as I'm aware of how rowdy these things can get. After the weddings are over, after reception's over, then the party starts, and then my sister is within sight of that. I know there's a Noah's ordinance, but the time the folks close, most likely our people in the neighborhood are in for the night. The evenings and the weekends are usually the only time these folks get to enjoy their outside time, including mowing their lawns. Parents of outside wedding, going to enjoy the sound of the lawn mower during their wedding ceremony. And it is like 21 acres, it's not that wide, it goes back. Just like the other lots, these people have bought, paid top dollar, and I understand they paid about at least, and they may correct me on this, $10,000 an acre for this land. And now, they want to put this venue across the road from it. I do own property down the road, it has a house on it that my daddy built, and my great nephew with his eight-year-old daughter live there, and that land connects the lot southern, which has, people have bought, planned to move, and make their home there. On the back of this land that, the land that we own, I have two family members that have made their homes there with their families. Also, I don't understand the value of property, how's it going to affect the depreciation? These people have paid top dollar for their property, what's it going to do to their land if they even try to sell it in the underside? If it's approved, and they try to sell it, are they going to get as much as they paid for it, knowing this venue is going to be there? And what's going to happen to my daddy's house he's built that he was so proud of and with the acreage he has? So just consider, it is a country road, we have, they have beautiful views, mountains, there are fields, but they're also residents, and they want to make their home there. I, I grew up on Piney Mountain Road. I grew up in Appomattox County, and that's where I grew up there, and I still have, I still feel like that's home, even though I'm living on Turkey Road here. Sorry.
All right, next up is T.W. Woody. Alright, next up is T.W. Woody. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's T.W. Woody, I live at 1979 Piney Mountain Road, I'm less than a half a mile, you know, away from where they're trying to put the wedding venue at. As y'all already noted, the planning commission voted 100% to deny this, because it's, it's not a good idea for the wedding venue on our road out there. They have less than 22 acres, and only four or five are actually usable right there. The rest of it is pine trees in the back, and it's, they don't have enough land to operate something like that. They said they wanted it for the community, they wanted to run it multiple nights a week to make money. You know, they're gonna have an ABC license over there, so what is it gonna be? Is it gonna be like a club or a dance hall in a rural neighborhood? I mean, what are we gonna have over there? A Wednesday night, so they gonna have $3 beers and karaoke going on? You don't know what it's gonna bring to the community. The property's zoned agriculture, and everything around is agriculture. The area is part of the Rural Preservation District, and it would be spot zoning if you allow business or a nightclub in agriculture area. If you don't deny this, what else are you gonna approve to get put around there? They actually, when they bought the land, they noticed it was zoned for no pig farms and no chicken farms. Well, they put a big pig farm sign up, said Piney Mountain Pig Farm sign, coming soon. And my grandmother lives right across the road, and that sign had to face her house. She's 80 years old, she's been living in that house for 55 years. My grandfather, he just passed away last year, and that's the kind of people we're dealing with, that's gonna be across the road from us. It's not one time have they ever come over there, you know, introduced themselves, said what they wanted to do, and I just think it's gonna be some shysty stuff going on over there. Nobody wants it to, to be there. They've already been having stuff going on over there without the wedding permits. My grandma was in the yard one day doing some yard work, and somebody stopped by, wanted to know where Piney, Quail Run Wedding Events was, because they had a baby shower to go to. I don't know how you're already running stuff if you hadn't got the proper permits. So, if you're already breaking the law, what else are you gonna do over there? There's been multiple houses that I've been to handing out flyers, you know, talking against this, and they've actually put it up for sale now. And a lot of people I've talked to said they wasn't gonna come out here tonight because it's for sale. They, they think that they're not gonna have the, they're not going through with the wedding venue. So, this room would be packed with a whole lot more people if they wouldn't have put that sign up. But what I don't understand is, if they have it for sale, why is the website still up? Why are they still taking bookings? It, it just doesn't make, make a lot of sense to me. But, then, you know, you talk about having a wedding over there, 102,000 people, y'all all been to weddings, you know what happens at a wedding. It's gonna be loud, half of them's gonna leave over there, half drunk, they're gonna be throwing beer cans, trash up and down your road. It's just, not nothing any of us on Piney Mountain wanna see coming. We just hope y'all can vote with the planning commission and do the right thing and keep them out of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Alright, next up is another, we apologize, I can't read what his first name is. I-ness, is it?
Iris.
Iris, okay. Right like my doctor, Iris, I apologize if I can't read it.
My name is Iris Woody, I'm this 80-year-old grandmother there I'm talking about. My address is 1430 Piney Mountain Road, Appomattox, Virginia. And I have some pictures, would you all like to see of what is, would you all like to see? I have lived there for 55 years. The barn is directly across the road from me. Every car, the driveway is almost, just, it's a few feet over to one side of our driveway. Every vehicle that comes out of it at night, which it's never been a lot of traffic there, shines right in every window on the front of my house. The noise is one issue, the lights are an issue, the alcohol that most likely will be served, and then that will be back out on the road. After the zoning meeting, and it was unanimously denied, the owner put the sign up that said, "Piney Mountain Pig Farm, Coming Soon." And I kid you not, it was this big, this long and this tall. And that showed me right there what we're dealing with, not just now, but in the future. And anyway, the sign has been taken down. I think it probably was showing a little bit, it wasn't a good thing that they were doing that when it was just a scare tactic. I had people stop and ask me about the pig farm. I mean, and I know nothing about it. But anyway, the picture will tell you how close I am to it and how it's going to affect everything. Not just me, but it's going to be everything that goes on over there. Because you don't know when they are scheduling these things, you don't know what to expect, we don't need the noise, and the mountains are beautiful. And people have talked about sitting there at night and just looking at the sky, looking at the mountains, the moon comes up over the Piney Mountain, and it's beautiful. So, I guess that's everything. I got this out.
You do not look your age.
Thank you.
Alright, next up is Mr. Jack Adams.
My name's Jack Adams, my wife and I recently perched, purchased a lot out there, Lot 7. When we saw the lot, it really, we've been looking for a lot like that for like three years. When we found it, this is like a nightmare, because it was told to us it's residential and it's agricultural. Never in a wildest dream did we ever think we'd face something like this. We settled, this lot settled after hours, so we had no knowledge of it whatsoever. We put a lot of money into this, matter of fact, collectively, they put nine lots out there. When you talk about this being a venue that's in a low populated area, well, that's telling you, when they say it's a low populated area, they're telling you, well, they're only gonna offend a few people. But now you have the subdivision out there, it's pretty populous out there. There's nine lots, and this happens to be in the center lot. So, I guess, you know, you wanna be an equal opportunity offender, because you put it right in the middle of the subdivision, and really now, collectively, we've put over a million dollars, people buying those lots. We haven't put the first house up yet. So, this is gonna sit right in the middle of that. Our lot, we love it because there are mountains, and I know that's why they're moving, because of mountain view. We're gonna sit there with the lights on that, we're gonna lose our night vision, we're not gonna be able to enjoy the sunsets. We're gonna sit there and listen to music, not, I've officiated a lot of weddings, and I'll tell you, the weddings last 15 minutes, it's the party that goes on. You know, I looked at something that Mr. Rourke had put out, and I was kinda confused because the hours are even worse than what I thought. He says that the events will be allowed to operate from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. That's a little bit worse than what I thought it was, because they're allowing at least another hour before and after to set up and tear down. You know, I called my realtor, I was incensed about this, and I asked her, "If I put this back on the market, can I expect to get what I paid for it?" She said, "Absolutely not." Well, first of all, you're robbing, they're robbing us of our dream. They don't live in this community, I plan to live there, that's a home for me, it's a business site for them. You know, when we were at the meeting the first time, when it was denied, the spokesman for them was Mr. Dennis Scott, he asked, he was the spokesman for him at the meeting, he stood at this very pulpit here. He announced, not, it's not gonna be some small venue, and he said at that meeting, he announced they're gonna target not only weddings, but every holiday and event that they could attract. Mr. Scott even invited everyone at that meeting to hold a family reunion and special events there. He said, I quote, "We need to make some money." And this is not a home for them, it's a business site for them. You know, the owner of this property, I Googled her residence, I mean, she's not worried about mine, so I Googled hers. She's got a nice home, and I'm happy for her. It's surrounded by trees and looks like a lot of acreage. She's not gonna be sitting there listening to wedding music where you don't even get the choice of the music gap to listen to. So, you know, this, and there are a lot of things, the alcohol is an issue, the traffic's an issue, the lights an issue, the noise. The noise itself is a violation of a code. Code says even in an apartment building, you can't have music loud enough to invade the apartment next to you, and it says clearly in the code that any time you have music or noise that goes across the property line on an ongoing basis, it's considered a nuisance. And that's what they're asking us to live with. You know, this needs to be denied, and I appreciate you guys doing the right thing.
What's your address again, sir?
Lot 7, Piney Mountain.
Residential address.
We don't have any.
Alright, next up is Tiffany Johnson. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Tiffany Johnson, and I currently live at 7103 Branch Dantler Circle in Millithian, Virginia, 23112. Me and my family bought Lot 6 off of Piney Mountain Road. We hoped that it would be our forever home, we spent months looking for the right place, somewhere peaceful, surrounded by nature, where we could build a life and enjoy a quiet pace of the countryside. When we found out our land on Piney Mountain, it felt perfect. We pictured sitting outside on the weekends, listening to the cricket, staring up at the stars, not dealing with loud music, bright lights, and weekend traffic. But ever since we found out about the proposed wedding venue, our excitement has been replaced with real concern. Weddings by nature are celebrations, as they should be, they're loud, often late, and come with music, big crowds, and quite often alcohol. That might work in a commercial district or on a property design for it, but Piney Mountain is a two-lane country road, it simply isn't built to handle the traffic that will come with events like this, especially on weekends, which are the real only time like working families get to relax and enjoy their homes. And this isn't just about the traffic, it's about changing the entire character of the area before we even get the chance to live there. Light pollution from the venue like this will take away from the clear night skies. Noise will drown out the peace and quiet that drew us all in. And with alcohol often being a part of weddings, we have to ask, do we really wanna increase the risk of people driving away from these events under the influence on especially narrow roads? We didn't invest in this land to live next to a party venue. We chose Piney Mountain because of the calm, the beauty, and the strong sense of the place it offered, a place to build a home, not just a place for weekend events. And if you take a look around the room tonight, it's not just my family that feels this way. We're not the only ones who took time out of our lives, made the drive out here, and showed up, hoping that our voices matter. There are families on Piney Mountain who live there for decades. There are also families like mine, just beginning to plan our roots. This concern isn't coming from one side, it's coming from all of us who care about preserving what makes this area special. We're simply asking you to listen, please think not just about what this venue might bring, but what it can also take away. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Next up is Dennis Scott. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Dennis Scott, I live at 1386 Coleman's Mill Road, about three miles from the proposed venue. I spoke at the last meeting, and I just wanted to clarify a lot of things that were brought forward. No additional lighting, they talk about light pollution, no additional lighting has been added to the venue, it's all the original lighting that has always been there. No additional outlets or anything to the pavilion, which was done completely legally by getting permits through this county. Nothing has been set up out there where you can put music outside. The thought was to keep it inside, so it wouldn't be a whole lot of noise. As far as it being agriculture, I was gonna put cattle around this thing and all the fencing and additional land to keep it eating down, so it would be cattle there. I totally respect the people that live on the road, Mrs. Woody right across from it, I have worked in her home, even though I'm sure she doesn't remember me, I worked with her husband quite a bit to repair Red Oak Church, and I respect the people that live here that, that have concerns, the people that are moving in here. You're changing the landscape just by that fact. I've hunted this land about 40-odd years, I guarantee you there's no more hunting. And if you think this is gonna be a disturbance and you've not experienced hunting season on Piney Mountain, you're in for a rude awakening, because it's not gonna be the quiet little neighborhood you think it is. It is a beautiful place, beautiful farm, beautiful country, agree with you. But, we're not adding to this in any way. I've been involved in building two wedding venues in this county. The other one was on a smaller place than this. They were saying previously that we, you know, it should be on something around 500 acres, well, that just eliminates anything growing like this in Appomattox County, because there's not that many pieces of land up for sale that you can buy with 500 acres and still make enough money off of it to justify your means there. And the disturbance is sure, everybody doesn't want a whole lot of things coming into their neighborhood and then concerned about things that haven't happened yet. But it's been brought to my attention, over the last 10 years, with the five venues that we have in Appomattox County, there's only been three calls and only two charges actually brought forward. So, this is not an actual real concern, this is a made-up concern in your head. Traffic on 608, there's always been plenty of traffic on 608, we have logging going on there constantly. All of Piney Mountain, most of Baldi Mountain for years was logging land, they're still logging it, they're turning over trees every year, you're gonna have big trucks rolling through, and that's just part of growth in any county. The Maze is here, wonderful people, and I'm gonna help police it, if there's any concerns, like I said, it's gonna be my cattle around it. So, I don't want anything going haywire myself or any disturbances or trash or anything in the neighborhood either. And I'm very close, so, that's all I have.
Alright, thank you.
I didn't say anything to you. All I said was he's making money off of it, that's what he wants.
Next up will be Mary Beth Mays.
Only have three minutes.
Pardon?
Do we have three minutes?
You have 10 minutes.
To speak.
State your name and address for the record.
Mary Beth Mays, I'm at 289 Andrews Lane, Spout Spring, Virginia. I do wanna ask you guys, there were accusations brought from these people about things going on in the wedding venue prior to getting approved. That was my daughter's baby shower. Just wanted to state that. Okay, so the benefits of Quail Run. So, how can Quail Run help Appomattox County? On the agenda, I'm gonna introduce the people who are gonna be responsible, the owners and managers, I'm gonna give you an introduction to Quail Run, I'm gonna talk about the economic benefits to Appomattox County, the community and social impact, the environmental, environmental and sustainability efforts, and future growth opportunities. So, my husband, Russell Joseph Mays, he's been Appomattox County resident his entire life, living at the same address basically, his mom lives maybe a mile away, so, and the entire Scott family, which, that's his family, the first cousins. I've been an Appomattox County resident since 1999, since I married that man back there. My son, Chad Cantrell, is going to be a manager, and his wife also is gonna be a manager. So, this happens to be a picture of us celebrating our 26th anniversary. Like I said, Rusty's a lifetime resident, he's been an automotive technician since 1991, he corrected me and said it was 93. He's been an owner of his own shop since 2013. We had one of our customers come in and speak on our behalf. We were voted best in the burg, which is in Lynchburg, Virginia, by our customers. That's a big deal, several times, because we do upright and honest business. That family, that business is family-owned. Two of our children work for us, and everyone that works there with us are family. We believe in living by the golden rule. You do unto others as you would have them do unto you. My husband is the father to four children. We have ten grandchildren. He's also a great-grandfather, and he's a lifetime member of Brady Springs Baptist Church, which is just up the road from where we live. Of course, me, I'm a resident of Appomattox County since 99. I'm a registered ultrasound tech. I work for a company called Olympus. I am a full-time employee. I grew up, it's not on this presentation, but I grew up a coal miner's daughter in southwestern Virginia, and I was dirt poor. So I believe in treating people the right way, and I will work my butt off to make sure my family is taken care of. So I was a previous adjunct professor at Central Virginia Community College. I taught vascular ultrasound and ultrasound physics. Previous president to the Virginia Society of Ultrasound, and I want to go into that just a little bit, because I wanted to perpetuate building people up. I started the Virginia Society of Ultrasound, and I ran it for four years, no pay. I got it incorporated. It was a non-for-profit. I did all this myself. Prior to that... So I have an MBA in Leadership and Organizational Development from Liberty University. I'm also the president of Brady Creek Properties, which Brady Creek Properties is not some big conglomerate, no matter what they think. It's not some big conglomerate. We own two properties. One of them is the barn. The other's his shop. I'm a small business owner. And I'm a little bit pissed. I'm sorry, but I am. Brady Creek has rehabbed three homes in Appomattox, so it has contributed to rehabbing Appomattox also. So we've taken a home that was uninhabitable and made it so someone could live in it. I'm also family-oriented, and I live by the golden rule. And yes, I did put that sign up because of the way people villainized me that first meeting. I'm not a villain. So Chad Cantrell, that's my little son. He's 27 years old. He graduated from Liberty Christian Academy. He's an MBA also from Leadership and Organizational Development, the same degree that I got from Liberty University. He's a national collegiate wrestling champion. This man knows how to work hard, and he treats people right. He volunteers for Fellowship of Christian Athletes for Wrestling. He's been employed in our shop since he was 15. He's a member of Brady Springs Baptist Church since he was baptized at the age of 10, and he's also lives by the golden rule. My daughter-in-law, Serena, she's very private, didn't want a whole lot of information on here, so I didn't put a lot of information on. She grew up in central Virginia, in the forest area. She's currently employed as a teacher in Appomattox County. She's a graduate of Liberty University also, and she also lives by the golden rule. So I wanted to introduce the people behind the products before I went into Quell Run. So my husband's here with me. Chad and Serena are on vacation in Merrill Beach, so they're not here. So the overview of the business. Quell Run and Wedding and Events will focus on creating unforgettable moments for weddings and special events, ensuring each occasion is unique. The venue boasts stunning landscapes, providing a perfect backdrop for any celebration, enhancing the overall experience. And it also has rustic charm. It combines rustic charm with contemporary facilities and will cater to diverse events while maintaining a cozy atmosphere. I'm not planning on having 300, 400 guests, even 200. I don't even think the county would let me do that. I don't even know how many people can be in the barn. I'm assuming it's going to be less than 100. That being said, it's not just about the money. I've looked for a wedding venue for 10 years. Ten years. Thought about buying a spring house, but it was in too much disrepair. So we will offer event planning services. My daughter-in-law is going to, she's meticulous about that. We're going to offer catering options that will cater to different people's talents and needs, and we'll have customizable packages. I just want to say that, yes, I did put a Facebook page up and my website up, but I am not a wait till it's time. I am a proactive person. I get stuff done. I just, you can ask my husband. He's like, you need to slow down. I'm like, I can't. So in this picture, it has stunning outdoor views, breathtaking mountains, and it's going to create that perfect wedding venue. That's why we bought this, knowing I was going to have to come through the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors to get it approved, if I get it approved. That's why it's for sale, because I don't know. And I can't afford to keep, if I don't have a business. Not made of money. Elegant indoor facilities right now. I stopped everything because of the Planning Commission meeting. I stopped construction. I stopped anything. But my vision was to have it, chandeliers and gauzy fabric in it to be beautiful, and that's what my website kind of portrays. I wanted it to be beautiful. I want to say another thing. I have four children. Two of my children have gone out of the area to get married because they couldn't afford the wedding venues here. Is that three minutes? So I can't go on.
Ace, what's the time on there?
It hits zero in 10 minutes.
Huh?
It was 10 minutes.
That was 10 minutes?
It went by quick.
Can I just point out this picture? The lady across the street, the barn is downhill from her. The stand of trees, if you're facing the barn from the road on the right, that blocks any view from the lot to the right of the barn. The stand of trees to the left, and I'm willing to plant trees to block... And we also, I guess, like Dennis said, we're not planning on having a lot of noise. Had it enclosed inside.
Any questions for the board?
Did I say something, Bosco?
Okay. Everything we always hear is county needs more businesses, it needs more things for children to do, so they don't have to be the county to get a job. Here you have somebody willing to invest over a million dollars in something. It's not going to be, the objections are all preemptive. I sympathize with the people that live there. Someone asked me, would I want this across the street from my house? And I said, what she's going to do, I would.
No, you would not.
All the objections are about noise. They're all preemptive. I asked the sheriff to look into something for me. He identified 10 like properties in the county. In the past five years, there were three complaints. In the past, in the past five years, there were three complaints out of 10 like properties in the entire county.
Well, that's because they have 500 acres.
No, they don't. No, they don't.
Oh, well, their website says they have 500 acres.
This is 10, 10 like properties in the county, not just one. I want to give that to the chairman to put it in. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we adopt the alternative resolution with spells all the guidelines that she has to adhere to.
What's that? I guess I should say what Mr. Bosco has given me is a letter from the sheriff that identified 10 wedding venues in the county, and during the review, only three calls for service in the past five years. And the three calls, considering, were following a flight call at a birthday party, which was dispersed on arrival. That was at Appomattox Inn. Noise violation, which was before 11:00 PM, and was followed up with music is off before 11:00 PM. That was at Falling River Country Club, and a domestic at Spring Grove B&amp;B. No traffic or other reports. I've driven that road. I live on a road similar. I don't, if I was in a high-traffic area, Haymarket, I can see where, yeah, you're talking about extra traffic and extra lights and that, but I don't, I don't see that much traffic coming here. But anyway, Mr. Bosco, what were you interrupting?
Well, one of the things that she didn't get to say, because she ran on time, was one of the things that in her business plan is to be a... For people that are in school, to learn business management, business running. I just, I just think the anticipatory negativity isn't there. It's all what if, this is going to happen. It's all speculation. It's going to be a small venue. I have some experience in my family with meeting planning, and that space, I'll tell you what, she's not going to have 100 people in there. It's not going to fit.
How do you know that?
Because the space isn't going to provide for it. And I thought we were on the right. I, you know, to infringe on the business opportunity of someone, this is not spot zoning. This is a conditional use allowed in agriculture, right?
We can't hear.
This is not spot zoning. This is a conditional use allowed in agriculture zoning. There's 30-some conditional uses allowed in agriculture zoning. Single-family homes are a conditional use in agriculture zoning. And like I said, before I ran, well, the time that I lived here, and now as supervisor, all you hear all the time is, we need business in the county, we need business in the county. This is going to be a beautiful venue. I'm convinced this is going to be a beautiful venue. She's not the kind of person that's going to have alcohol and drunk people driving out of there. Laugh what you want. And biblically, nowhere in the Bible does it say we can take a preemptive strike against something.
By me being a representative of Piney Mountain District, I'm very concerned, first of all, that the Planning Commission, it was unanimously voted against. And that causes a real concern for me. And I'm also concerned about Ms. Mays being able to see her dream fulfilled. And then the third part of it, I'm concerned about the citizens here that have their own dreams. So I just want to get it out front. I'm not opposed to a wedding venue per se, but I am concerned about my fellow citizens, what their, what their concerns are. So if it's put to a vote, I will either abstain or I will vote no. And it doesn't have anything to do with, I don't want to see your dreams fulfilled, but I have to balance the other people, their dreams as well.
Mr. Chairman. Are you, do you have plans to limit the amount of people that come? I'm just curious, because...
Yes, I mean, it won't hold that big. It's not, inside it's not that big.
And the music.
I will follow the Appomattox County guidelines.
Right. I just mean, as far as it's been stated, I think by Mr. Scott, if I have his name right, that music was maybe on the inside.
Audience, if you don't keep it down, I'll ask you to leave. Your discussion time has been earned.
They can't hear me. It only goes so loud. It's going to start feeding back, but anyhow. Yeah, I, you know, with the valid concerns, I'm just, you know, curious what you would say about the, I'm just giving you an opportunity to address that, you know? If you're across the street and the music's blaring or whatever, that's what they're concerned about, obviously.
One of us is going to be there, present during each event. That's part of what Johnny put in his proposal.
Right, right.
And, and, and my, I haven't had the contracts drawn up yet, but when a potential client signs it, if, if there is a noise complaint, they're going to pay a fine, fine, of $400. It's going to be in my contract. That's pretty conducive to making them a buyer.
Well, we're questioning her. That's part of what we're doing, and hearing the permit, that's the point of this. But I, you're, the constituents are very clear. I don't, I mean, we're all, we've heard that. I'm trying to assess with her, you know, her position, her answer to these, you know, what I think are reasonable complaints. And I know that she thinks that, too, so that's why I'm trying to give an opportunity to, you know, state, you know, some mitigation that you might have. I'm just trying, you know, to be, to be clear, I'm trying to figure out how you have a small building that you're going to do music inside of, plus people inside of, so unless you're going to limit the amount of people, those two things just don't go together. You see what I'm saying? So I'm just trying to figure that out, because if the music was indoors, that obviously limits some of the concerns.
Yes, it will be indoors. If that's what you tell me I have to do, it will be indoors.
And one of my questions is, is there a concern about you getting a liquor license and turning it into a nightclub?
I have never, ever even consented. I haven't even talked to the ABC system, have not contacted them. That is not on my agenda at all.
With your church affiliations, I didn't figure that was an option anyway.
That's not on my agenda at all.
Is alcohol, and I don't know that you even have to answer this. I mean, I'm just, I'm just asking that, is that something that I think probably all wedding venues allow alcohol, I guess? I don't know. But I don't know if there's dry wedding venues, maybe a church. But, but, I mean, I'm assuming that, that you want to have alcohol?
That would be up to the potential client, and they would be handling any of that. However, I would say that one of us is going to be present to mitigate. And if, if that... And if, if that were us, or to see, or with the instruction, basically, basically being a bouncer, like...
Yeah, yeah. To be honest, I feel a lot like Al, I'm literally right in the middle. We, we want people to develop their property, and for someone to have 20 acres and not be able to develop it, it sounds ridiculous, especially when our zoning says you can do that if we approve a conditional use for it. The flip side is, I feel what they're saying too. And, you know, I live in Concord, a mile from Sheets, you know, back behind. Sheets is a venue that, once or twice a year, in Campbell County, puts on a shindig of some sorts, and it rattles the windows on the house. And so that, you know, when I'm thinking of what they're saying, I'm thinking of that, and I have five kids, so obviously, we don't keep them up till 11:00 at night, you know? So I'm sympathetic to both sides. Johnny, could I, could I ask you a question? Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Yes. How unreasonable is it to put a limitation that the music is indoors? And I'm, I'm not, I'm not putting you on the spot to make a decision, I'm just, in general...
I would, I would defer to the attorney as to reasonableness, because that...
Yeah.
As, as you've, as you've gone through different zoning petitions, they have, as you know, conditions have to be reasonable and relatable to the petition. So that is a determination on your part as to whether the condition is reasonable and relatable to mitigate the concerns of the petition.
Is it a burden?
Say that correct, Mr. Chairman?
Is it a burden to you to put the music inside for your business? The music is in the barn or behind, or in a pavilion behind some plastic?
So there's, there's the barn part, and there, there's then an addition of a pavilion that's, you know, got a roof and it's open on, it's two sides, yeah, two sides. So that's what she's talking about is...
The music's in the pavilion, is that what we're saying?
So the music, what she's saying is, would be in the barn, but she, I think what she's trying to say is she'd like to be able to add on some sort of siding there to the, to the pavilion, to, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir. The, the idea of putting a restriction on the music being inside is, it would be reasonable because it is a direct, it's a direct condition relative to concerns of the use of it.
The only, the only other consideration to me is lowering the time, but that's not consistent with our own noise ordinance for literally everybody in the county.
That's correct. I think you would, you would be creating an additional problem there by doing that. I mean, the noise ordinance sets the standard for the entire community. So I'm not sure that setting, if you, if you required that the music be turned off earlier, other than as set forth in the noise ordinance, there could be an argument that that is reasonable, but I wouldn't suggest it.
Can you say that again?
I said, there could be an argument made that if you incorporated a prohibition of music outside after a certain time, there could be an argument made that that is reasonable and therefore is permitted as part of the conditional use permit. But I don't know if, and I can't say that sitting here, if that can be undermined in a legal challenge based on the overall noise ordinance requirements.
You might not need me for the vote, I don't know, that's the thing, but for me to approve it, it would have, the music would need to be indoors. I just think that's a respectful thing for the neighbors. The, well, I wanted to affirm that, but we will put it in the conditions if we did that. So...
So when, if you made a motion to use the alternative resolution, you would need to state in your motion that you would like to add as a condition that the music would be indoors, that would need to be stated in the motion to add that to, to amend the alternative.
It's just, it's just the only way that I can be agreeable to it and feel like I'm appeasing both parties, but that's just, I'm one vote, so. I mean, I, I would, I would make a motion that we approve with the condition that the music has to be indoors. And if you, and if you go second that, vote that down, then re-vote, whatever, that's...
I'll second that.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded, and the resolution granting the conditional use permit with the additional qualification that the music is indoors. Right now, the conditions on there, yeah. Following conditions then would be, to mitigate neighbor concerns, would be, the wedding and special venue would be construct, construct, oh yeah, in accordance with except concept. Plan and application date in May 9th. Hours of operation from 8:00 to 11:00, Monday through Saturday, Sunday. Hours, not more than 11:00 to 7:00. Better set up removal, they occupy one hour pre and post. There should be onsite owner-operator at all times, with emergency contact number displayed and location. Public right of way, event operators apply with all Appomattox County noise at all times and quiet times. Fireworks are prohibited, prohibited, and all music would be indoors. And the operator should maintain accessible route for emergency vehicles at all times. And infill travel lanes must be below 10 feet in width or one-way traffic in 25th wind. Parking should be limited to areas designated and approved on a set plan. Those are the conditions in the resolution for conditional use. Any other further discussion? I'm hearing no further discussion, all the questions. Mr. Carter?
No.
Mr. Heps? Mr. Woskell? Herman Jones?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carter?
Maybe I didn't understand a question.
Would, the question is, Mr. Heps made the motion and Mr. Woskell granted that the resolution granting a conditional permit that's written in the pack, in the agenda packet, be approved as long as it included the stipulation that all amusing must be indoors? Mr. Carter, no. Mr. Heps? Was yes. Mr. Woskell? That's our turn. Unlike many other here on the board, as, as we get beat up everywhere we go about no new business in Appomattox, no place for people to work, children are leaving because there's no opportunities, and every time a new business comes in to start, it's like, we don't want it in our backyard, oh, we can't have that kind of business here, and things get turned out. And here we're, it's, it's a shame she didn't get a chance to go through the rest of her business plan, but she's talking about opportunities for other businesses in Appomattox, the cadiers, lodging opportunities, part-time work for people like students, student internship possibility, she's expressed. And personally, I'm just, I'm going to step out of the thing and say, time for getting new business started in Appomattox, I'm going to... Mr. Carter, what?
I just, what I would vote no on was no outdoor music.
Right. That's, there is no outdoor music.
But I vote yes for the, for the wedding, for the...
Nice, I'm ready to take this one. Mr. Carter? Then the conditional use permit is approved, but the conditions is up. All right, next up, is amendments to zoning and subdivision ordinances. A duly advertised public area has been scheduled to receive comments and proposed amendments to the zoning and subdivision ordinances, specifically Section 19 floodplain overlay display district, Section 19-612, definitions, Section 19-5-18. Family division notes to be amended periodically. FEMA provides for updates to firm, to firm maps, which necessitates an update to the corresponding section of zoning ordinances. The state has provided a model ordinance associated definitions. Finally, at the end of last year, the family division requirements were amended to adjust the pre and post ownership requirements for family divisions, general code, alerted staff, the final plat note filed later in the subdivision ordinance needed to be updated to match the prior change. And staff recommends, after receiving comments on the public ordinance, have prepared your consideration to repeal and replace Section 19.6-76 related to floodplain overlay district, and amend Section 19.6-12 related definitions, and amend in Section 19.5 (CC) (8) related to family division notes. Mr. O'Rourke, is there anybody for the public area? Does anybody have any questions on these? I think these, as I recall, Mr. O'Rourke, these were necessitated by a FEMA report?
Yes, all of the floodplain overlay ordinance definitions and all that good stuff are part of the update to the floodplain maps. Go through this periodically, the last update was 2008. When this happens, we work with FEMA, I've been working with FEMA and the state folks for about a year on updating the maps and getting the ordinance updated. The ordinance that you have in your packet for the floodplain overlay district comes straight from the state model ordinance and is just put into our terminology and our, our ordinance with the headings, the section numbers and all that. It's been reviewed by FEMA, it's been reviewed by the state DCR folks, they've given their sign-off on it, so, you know, that is what it is. I did bring flood insurance study, so you can see the study, this details the different places, and I have one of the panels, if you want to see what a panel looks like, just, because it doesn't apply, it only applies in the floodplain. So when you look at one of the panels, you can see the colored area, they're the, they're the different floodplain areas, area A, area AE, whatever. That is where these restrictions or regulations would be. As far as the subdivision part, that's just a clerical picking up a piece that we left behind back in December when we upgraded that, so that's kind of what it is.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. O'Rourke? The chair will accept the motion to either approve the, replace the floodplain overlay, replace the sections or not?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think we have a choice. I don't think we have a choice. It's a FEMA directive, so I make a motion, we accept it.
All right. Mr. Woskell's made the motion to repeal and replace Section 19.6-76. There's seconds. Mr. Carter, seconds. Any further discussion? All right. Mr. Carter? Mr. Heps? Mr. Woskell? Herman Jones? I vote aye also. Repeal and replace Section 19.6-76 related to floodplain as stated.
Does that motion include all three? There, there's three different parts, there's the floodplain part, there's the definition part, and there's the subdivision note part.
Yes, that would be all three. Is it all section?
Includes everything on the bottom there.
That includes Section 19.6-76, Section 19.612, and Section 19.5 (C) and A. Next action item, a sale of equipment. Now that the AG voting precinct's been merged with Oakville voting precinct, the electric board is requesting the board's consideration and approval to sell one of the Easy Cart caged to Goocham County for 1,100 bucks. Josh Moore, registrar, is presenting. To discuss and answer any questions the board may have. Staff recommendations, consider the sale of the Easy Cart to Goocham County, it's about 1,100 bucks.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Herman Jones made a motion to approve the sale, is there a second?
Sir.
Mr. Carter, a second. Discussion? A vote. Mr. Woskell? Herman Jones? Mr. Heps? Mr. Carter?
I vote aye also.
You may sell the cart. All right, next up, ordinance providing payment of bonuses to certain county employees. Attached to the board adoption is the ordinance providing for the payment of bonuses to full-time county employees effective July 1, 2025, who were hired prior to May 2025. The 1.5% bonus is based on employees FY 2025's salary during the county's FY 26 budget. Work session consideration for the bonus was granted to all county department full-time employees, and bonuses were included in the FY 2026 county budget. And approved at the April 30, 2025, special call meeting after the county received notification that the state proposed the bonuses. The county tries to align with the state's recommendation for cost of living increases and bonuses. Staff recommends, adopt the ordinance providing for the payment of bonuses to all county department's full-time employees to include Constitutional Officer Department, Registrar's Office, and the Department of Social Services.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Herman Jones has made the motion to adopt the ordinance. Is there a second? Mr. Woskell has made a second, is there discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Heps?
Susan, just for Claire, Mrs. Adams, just for clarification, why are we saying certain? What is that to say, full-time?
It would be all full-time unless they were hired after, and first, and all those restrictions are in the guidelines of the government's proposed.
Okay, but we already approved this in our budget, so why, why do we need to do this, just because we have to?
No, because the state requires it for Department of Social Services and Constitutional.
That's, that's true, and there is also a Code of Virginia section that specifically talks about one-time bonuses having to be done by ordinance.
Any other? All right, Mr. Woskell? How do you vote? Mr. Carter? Mr. Heps? I vote aye also. About 1,100, the registrar just sold, cover their bonuses? All right. Schools appropriation request for the FY 2024 end-of-year spending CIP fund. Per agreement between the school board and the board of supervisors, the schools' end of year local contribution savings will be transferred to the school capital improvement fund after the official audit is performed and reported to the board of supervisors. The amount of year-end savings verified for FY 2024 audit is $1,134,311. Attached for the board's review is a letter from Dr. Bennett requesting the balance of the unspent funds be transferred to the school capital improvement fund. Staff recommends consider, consideration of Dr. Bennett's request to appropriate the FY 2024 end-of-year local fund savings to the school capital improvement fund. improvement fund in the amount of $1,134,1, $1,134,311.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that a motion.
Reverend Jones made the move, the motion to approve the request.
I'll second.
Second, any further discussion? Mr. Woskell, your vote.
Aye.
Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Carter.
Aye.
Mr. Hipps.
Aye.
I vote aye also. Next up is Hattman's County Schools again. Hattman's County Public Schools requesting the board's approval of exemption to HB 1902 for the 2025-2026 school year, as they currently have approximately $6,000 in styrofoam trays in the stock rooms of the cafeteria. See attached email explanation from Dr. Jason Tibbs, school superintendent. Dr. Jason Tibbs, school superintendent, is present. Discuss any questions the board may have. Staff recommends it is consider approval of the exemption to House Bill 1902 for Hattman's County Public Schools during the 2025-2026 school year.
I'll just get a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carter made a motion to approve the exemption. Mr. Woskell, a second.
I did just rule.
The vote, Mr. Woskell. Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Carter.
Aye.
Mr. Hipps.
I vote aye also.
Seems like common sense to me. All right, next, Department of Social Services, FY 2025 operating budget. Please approve the transfer by consent of $5,468.70 from the general fund and appropriate to 5301 3,009 management consulting. At the end, at the November 18, 2024 meeting, the board approved the county administrator execute a consulting contract for an intern director for the Department of Social Services not to exceed $15,000. However, due to the extended length of time that the intern director has provided, their services expenditures have exceeded the $15,000. Staff recommends approval as no, as, oh, no, staff recommendation, new local funds are required. So, my understanding is right, we need to approve and transfer by consent out of the general fund money to cover this. Mr. Woskell has made the motion to transfer the funds from the general fund to the management consulting line, is there a second? Mr. Hipps is seconded, discussion? All right, motion has been made and seconded to transfer by consent $5,468.70 from general fund into the 5301 3,009 management consulting account. Mr. Carter.
Aye.
Mr. Hipps.
Aye.
Reverend Jones.
Aye.
I vote aye also. All right, capital projects. Please approve by transfer of consent $1,076,783.25 from the general fund and appropriate the following to the FY 2025 operating budget. DSS renovation, $139,466, and courthouse renovation, $937,778.59. No new local funds are required. Is there a motion to approve the transfer?
So moved.
Mr. Carter's moved, is there a second?
Second.
Reverend Jones is second. Discussion? Mr. Woskell, how do you vote?
Aye.
Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Hipps.
Aye.
Mr. Carter.
Aye.
I vote aye also. The approval of transfer by consent from renovation is approved. All right, next up, Sheriff's Asset Forfeiture Fund. Please transfer $5,129 from the general fund and appropriate to the sheriff's asset forfeiture fund. Reference sale of two sheriff's department vehicles that were sold at gout deals and purchased out of asset forfeiture fund, and purchased out of asset forfeiture funds. According to the state federal requirements, the funds from the state sale of these vehicles must be deposited back into the asset forfeiture funds. Staff recommends approval of the transfer. Is there a motion to do such?
So.
Reverend Jones has moved to approve the transfer, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Carter, second. Discussion? Mr. Woskell.
Aye.
Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Hipps. Mr. Carter.
Aye.
I vote aye also. Approved transfer of $5,125 from the general fund to the sheriff's asset forfeiture fund is approved. Next up is item 16, Sheriff's Request for Line Item Transfer. Sheriff, you're up. If I was going to have to have you escort some people, not allow that.
I do have a clarifying question for what was, uh, pass, pick one and pass one. You give one to the chairman. On the motion that was made for the venue, I just want to make sure there's clarification to that. There was no change to the code section, the county code, correct? So, therefore, if there are any calls to this in night time, we will not be able to enforce it. This has to be a permit issue that's called in to the county. So, this isn't anything the sheriff's office can handle. So, I don't want the citizens to think if they call and we don't do anything, there's nothing the sheriff's office is doing wrong, we just won't be able to enforce it, unless it's a violation of no order and something like that after 11 o'clock. So, just to be transparent with everybody. What I come to you before tonight is, we were graciously awarded, I went before the town council last year and asked for some different line items to be given to us to supply for their two deputies that they paid for for the sheriff's office. The things that are highlighted, the things that they approved to give us that were never put into our budget last year, but it was given to the county to put in our budget. So, I'm coming before the county tonight to ask for that money to be put into our budget this year, along with what the town council has already approved to put into our budget as well this year.
Mr. Chairman, I actually thought we'd done that.
As I understand, if I heard what the sheriff said, right, this is something that came in after.
Budget.
As you can see, our emails, this was approved before the appropriations last year. So, it was supposed to be in the FY 25 budget of mine from the town, and was sent to the county, but it was never put into our budget.
It's accounted for in our revenue budget, it supplements the department budget. So, yes, it is accounted.
So, then I must be misrepresented the board out here, because when the county approves my budget, it tells me there's a number that I'm giving. Then the town approves more money, that should be accumulated together to form my budget, and it did not, my budget did not grow to improve with the town budget.
But what I'm not understanding, you're saying to add $135,000 to your salary line?
I'm saying that the highlighted numbers, $13,000, like the uniform line, should have increased $2,000. The fuel line should have increased to $2,000. The training budget should have increased $2,000. Our academy dues should have created $1,000, and the K-9 should have went up $6,000, for a total of $16,000 that we never got.
This is the first I've seen of this, so I don't have the documentation.
This was, has your office and the email chain where it came in. And also approved is the checks are sent to the county from the town.
Mr. Chairman, I suggest that we table this to tell we can investigate, but there's others, checks are there.
It's not going to break you for us to put this back up, is it?
It's not, but it's been a year, it's been talked about, that's why I'm being brought forward to the board. You know, I took it to the town and advised them what was going on, and I just try to be transparent with everybody. To my knowledge, there should be an increased tariff budget from the town.
Understand, it seems like I vaguely remember something about this, too. It's a pleasure with the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hipps.
So, what would the, you know, assuming everything checked out, whatever money, what would the corrective action be to it, to transfer 13,000 to what?
So, each one of those highlighted, into each one of their line items that we already have from the county budget. So, obviously, our K-9 donation, that 6,000.
To those particular lines?
Yes, sir, yeah.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
So, you're, you know, so is it, are we talking about 163,000, or are we talking about 13,000?
Just 13,000. So, obviously, the deputies were paying. So, that money was put into the, or salary lines. So, I'm only coming for the highlighted numbers, because that's where our budget did not increase any to those amounts to show the reflection that the town money was put into.
Mark, could we make a motion that was contingent upon, you know, the board directs Mrs. Adams to make the transfer if that is warranted, and if not, then the questions would be brought up next month? Is that something?
Most certainly, sure. You can just authorize or to make the increases if it checks out accordingly. Otherwise, to come back to the board and discuss it further.
And I will say, if the money was not spent by June 30, we can't spend the mail even.
Never given to me to spend.
Well, if it's not spent, you can't spend the mail, so you would have to.
Yes, I'd like for it to be put into the F-26 budget with the money that's coming in. So, the town has already agreed to a new budget for us, which is going to be on top of this. So, this money was approved through the town this year, so this is 25 budget, the 26 is this as well. So, it's really going to look like double the amount going into the account, just because it's going to include the 25 budget with the 26 budget from the town.
Well, you can't transfer without the board authorizing it, right?
Well, I've got to look at what we claim in the revenue budget from the town, if we have a separate line item from the town contribution, and what that money is.
May I ask what that is?
I haven't.
What is the definition of the revenue line?
It's in our revenue budget that when we establish, which we have to balance the budget. So, we have to establish income revenues and then the expenses in the expense budget.
Sure.
So, what we typically try to do is get a report from the town that tells us what that lump sum contribution is, and that's what we put in our revenue budget that supplements the department of the expense.
So, when they approve a budget to me, this budget to me, it doesn't say anything about revenue, how does it come around with it?
It's incoming money, just like we get money from the top board, we get money from various state agencies, and we account for that in our revenue budget. And at the end of the budget year, or at the beginning and end of the budget year, our revenue budget has to balance with the expense.
Okay. May I, Mrs. Adams?
I have to speak to that, there was something different about how we authorized the money last year through the council. Um, if I may.
Yes, my dear from the council.
Exactly how you explained it, you know, we're looking at revenue side and the expenditure side. It was my intent with the new line items, that deputies receive training throughout the year and make sure that those line items are spent. So, the goal was to work, you guys add another expenditure line item. If that hasn't been done, I would imagine the funds were not spent, that we were just going to access to them. Then, I would imagine that $13,000 of money that was offered at the deputy's training account, because we intended to restrict that for the specific deputies that we pay for, for their uniforms, for their dogs, and for the training. So, there was some verbiage in the budget discussion I don't hope to pass, as to if we have to force a resolution or not. That would be a question to pay attention to. But, to me, if it wasn't spent, then it wouldn't turn into.
I guess my question is, does the town send us a lump sum check, and we have to figure out what we're supposed to do with it, or they said an itemized, this fund goes so that we know what the money is for?
As you can see, the email that includes it itemized out.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I don't think there's any specific motion that we can make tonight, but the general agreement of the board is that we'll address this next month when we have more information. Can't authorize anything if we don't know what's going on. So, that the intention of the board next month will be to settle this, one way or the other.
I guess my question was, is this the money, would the, okay, so the county already pays for those officers that the town is supplementing itself?
Yeah.
So, is that considered a reimbursement to the county from the town for their uniform? Are they going to get extra income?
So, we wanted to take total, not ownership, but we wanted to handle the whole, cradle to grave, if you will, of that deputy and the cost of that deputy, so that we're not burdening the county back there with costs. So, we voted to add FICA, VRAS, and all the other, brings benefits as well, and to make sure we're covering those. And the training line was, I know specifically in the minutes of the meeting, we said that we wanted the training line to be spent, to be a cost, we want deputies to get training. And then the other lines, I don't know if it was that intent, or if it should be mixed into the general, after that.
Okay, so we would need to put in another designated line to track the deputies that the town has.
Well, the way I see it, it's, he's talking specifically K-9 food care. They want to know that we spent $6,000 on K-9.
And that's easy, because we don't put in money.
And we didn't get that $6,000 either, so.
It's, it's in the budget.
It's not.
Because the way this reads, the town is saying, hey, we're going to give you $6,000 for K-9 food care, $2,000 for uniform, $2,000 for fuel, $2,000 for training, $2,000 for academy, and that $13,000 adds up, the sheriff's saying, never showed up in his budget. And so, he wants to know where that, you know, that's what I, my first question is, well, did we get that $13,000 from the town with specific instructions that six goes to K-9 food, two uniform, two, et cetera? So, I think what we need to answer is, you know, did we get the money from the town with those specific instructions? And then, the thing is, since it's last year's money, if we had it, if we got it, we need to move it into the 2026 budget, Mr. Sheriff.
And if I had known about this presentation, Tony, and I could have rolled that documentation in the revenue and expense budget.
We share your frustration, Sheriff.
I bring it here for a reason. Thank you.
Make the good reminder. All right, next up. Yes, Mr. Woskell.
We can do that. It's going to do your revenue budget, no problem. So, it's either accounted for here, or it's accounted for there. So, if you tell me where you want to see it, that's where we can go.
As long as the town sees it where they want it to see it.
That would be ideal for us, if there's any, if that comes. It sounds weird, but we did have that discussion, and intended to have individual line items.
And that really should not, we wish that.
I guess that, in knowing our county manager's situation and everything, it might be a problem.
All right. Moving along, consent agenda, because I know Mr. Carter is.
Yeah.
All right, consent agenda clears approval of bills, minutes, supplemental appropriations, line item transfer, and fund transfers. Any item on the consent agenda shall be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the vote on consent agenda. Agenda items removed from the consent agenda shall be considered by the board individually in order which they were removed from the consent agenda immediately following consideration of consent agenda. Does anybody have, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, or do we have questions?
So moved.
Mr. Reverend Jones has moved to accept the consent agenda, is there a second? Mr. Hipps is seconded. Mr. Carter.
Aye.
Mr. Hipps.
Aye.
Mr. Woskell.
Aye.
Reverend Jones.
Aye.
I vote aye also. All right, next goes to attorney's report.
Mr. Chairman, I have one item, suggested amendment to the transient occupancy tax ordinance. There were some minor adjustments made by the General Assembly to the statutory language of the code, and so I'm just trying to mesh that into your current local ordinance to follow and track the state law. So, I would just ask, this be set for a public hearing. Attorney, next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, what's the, I mean, is it just, what's the extent of the, if you look at the.
The, if you look at the, um, if you look at the ordinance that's in your packet, it adds one subsection to the current section related to it, which relates to accommodation providers will not be required to submit a report to the commissioner of the revenue under certain conditions.
Okay.
Okay? Right now, it's a standard, they're supposed to submit it under all conditions, but I guess they got somebody at the general assembly and said, hey, can you cut us a break if, you know, the retail sales is below a certain...
All right, sorry, I didn't realize it was in there.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, is there a motion to set up public hearing on transient occupancy tax next meeting? That would be the August eighteenth meeting? Herman, Robert. Mr. Willskill made the motion to set up public hearing for the occupancy tax on August eighteenth. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Carter made a second, further discussion? Mr. Carter.
Hi.
Mr. Hips.
Hi.
Mr. Willskill. Herman Jones. Hi. I vote aye also, have a public hearing on the occupancy tax. All righty.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carter.
Can we have a three-minute break?
Sure. We will have a three-minute recess.
Yeah, he hooked me up when he was in the hospital last time. Yeah, SharePoint, yeah. What'd you wanna know about it?
What's that?
In SharePoint? Huh, interesting. Well, no, not for anything important, there may be somebody, somebody using it somewhere. Okay, interesting. I was wondering, I didn't know if you were trying to do something... Oh. That's the, probably the one shade down to the cloud stuff, it's just, it's a huge target, like, there's an infrastructure behind it, but when you're getting aimed at from everywhere, stuff gets through so fast.
Is our three minutes up, please?
Oh goodness gracious, I should've been keeping track, but yes.
All right, now bring the meeting back into session, supervise back into session. Minister's report.
You have a top of the report in front of you, and if you have any questions pertaining to the specific departments, if you would like to contact those department heads or myself. Um, there are a couple of things I wanted to point out. The facilities committee staff will be coordinating a meeting with you to talk about the health department renovation project, as well as the roof replacement. I think Mr. Shepherd had mentioned that to some of you, and you looked at the report.
Yes, I was looking for that.
Yes. And at the health department, they had requested that we do an air quality test, which that test was performed in June, the results came back in July, and there are no significant concerns. Also, in the courthouse construction, as most of you know, it looks like that project has been delayed. So now we're looking at the first of September for project completion. Uh, the Department of Social Services renovation is almost completed. We are waiting the arrival, the delivery of the doors, so they can be installed. And also, I sent an email to you about the hire of a new director, it's Alicia White. She's got a strong background in the human services field and mental health management. And we've met a couple of times, we've had some calls with the state, and we're working on trying to get her some training. Also, the board work session, we talked about having a work session to talk about our health improvement projects. And I had spoken with Dr. Tibbs, and he mentioned that that, their DOE report has been received, but he would like to wait until he shares it with the school board first. And once he has that, he'll provide it to the board supervisors, and we can have our work session and then try to coordinate that, that work session with the town. Dr. Tibbs is actively working in his role as school superintendent that he assumed on July first. We met a couple of times and talked about the budgets, and I think he's here this evening, if anybody has any questions for him. And if any of you would like the tour of the courthouse renovation or the Department of Social Services, contact me, the Judge Shepherd or myself, and we can arrange that. Any questions?
Yes. I read on the town's website that in April, they approved a resolution authorizing the town manager to engage with the county and also directly with CCUSA on water contract. And I wonder if there's been any, if you, if they contacted the county and started talking about the water contract, or...
We, we have a document that the attorney is reviewing, and it plans to talk, speak to you about it in closing.
Okay, all right. I just had seen that resolution, and I wonder if there's any action. All right. Any questions, Mr. Board? All right, reports and informational items of school financial report attached for your review, or if you need some reading material, and then the delinquent tax status reports attached. Any questions on that? All right, next up, supervising concerns. It's time for individual board members to share information with other members of the board and the monthly items presented under the heading, "Requiring Action Will Be At Future Meeting", or "Request Additional Information With Staff Members". No present, no item presented under the heading, "Shall be acted upon at this meeting without unanimous consent". Mr. Willskill. Herman Jones.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm very concerned about the condition of the playground area at the community center. We have very limited place for recreation for our young people, and the basketball court is really in bad shape, you know? So the other dead grass growing up. I think we need to maintain that space as a recreational place for our young people, on the place we have now.
I see, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second that, because I brought that up six months ago. People were, they can't play basketball up there. It wouldn't be a big, wouldn't be a big project to just pave that over and give them a nice surface to play basketball. But I'm with, I'm with Al on that.
Yeah, and we would need it a long more heavily patrolled, because there's been some activity of crime. It's in a bad location.
And I'm, I'm sure of that, and I, and I think that, you know, even with that being said, you know, our young people, the majority of them, they go there and they behave their city over the, over the years. But there's gonna be some bad actors anyway. I just hate to see the county lose that one recreational space for these kids.
Mr. Carter. Mr. Hips. All right, uh, I got two things, I just, like I say, we just, one of my extra assignments from this job is to sit on the central Virginia workforce development area for Area Five, and our last two meetings, which we meet quarterly, with the last two, it's Dr. Capps from CBCC, has expressed the excitement with having the welding, being able to, our CT, whatever, yeah, this, our welding school here will be operational, except students. And there are a lot of interests from different employers, because part of what the workforce does is it pays for training for workers to improve their skills, and that with welding school here, it'll never be a place for them. And also, you know, a place like Virginia Metal Works uses workforce development to help, they, they get funded from workforce development for workers to improve their skills, too. They have reimbursed. And then another part was for the youth. There's like up to a five hundred dollar per apprentice feedback, and up to four thousand dollars reimbursement to manufacturing and other businesses. Like, we had a local HVAC service person who wanted to bring on a student as a apprentice. Workforce development would reimburse them part of their salary in that. And I know that Megan Graves, the counselor out at the school, is working really well with workforce development, getting counseling for students, and also getting them into some of the training and the premise opportunities through the workforce development. And I know I'd asked Mrs. Adams to put that link on the website, and so if anybody wants to go look at it, it's up there, because there's, to me, I see there's a lot of things that the central Virginia Workforce Development Board does through the different programs that I think AMAG residents are missing out on, and also some of our businesses. And I'd also like to say that Jamerson Lewis Construction is now one of the workforce, yeah, workforce development board members, and they're already talking about working with them in for an apprentice system in the Jamerson Lewis Construction industry. So I think there's a lot more we could get out of the workforce development center, and we are getting a lot of, we've increased, I don't know if I have that chart, I don't think that chart's in here, I'm thinking about how many AMAGs people are serviced. No, that's not part of this one, I don't know what I'm doing, anyway. They're increasing every year, so that's... And I was about to see the turnout tonight. As, as, as Trevor, Trevor said to me, if we had this kind of turnout more often, that, you know, a lot of the things going around the county, county might be clarified. Other than that, the only thing I have is, in case you didn't know, you know, we had trouble with Dr. Boone, or Dr. Boone had trouble, and as of June, or one is June twenty-fifth, and the other was July twenty-fifth, or excuse me, fourteen July of twenty twenty-five, and twenty-seven June of twenty twenty-five. Two of the suits against Dr. Boone and his corporations have been dismissed by the federal government. So things should be bringing up for Dr. Boone, and thankful for that. Other than that, I have no, no concerns other than where I express my concern, there are more things to do. All right, who's gonna make the motion to move the board to, all right, I move the board to supervise having to close meeting for the limited purpose of consultation with legal counsel retained by the board regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice regarding the Combs property and the proposed transfer of certain public infrastructure to another public body all pursuant to Section two dash two dash three seven eleven A eight of the Code of Virginia. Is there a second? Mr. Carter, second? Discussion? Mr. Carter, how do you vote? Mr. Hips? Professor? Herman Jones?
Hi.
I vote aye also.